A minute passed, so why don't we get going? Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, April 12th, meeting of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council. Deborah, could you please read the roll?
Chairman Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Boucher?
Here.
Counselor Deveraux?
Here.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Here.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan? Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Here.
Counselor Noonan?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Can we do the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any correspondence or reports that they'd like to bring forward at this point? Go ahead, Counselor Noonan.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know, I got an email from a Cape resident who happens to be my mother, which is why the rest of you didn't get it. But she just wanted to pass long compliments to a couple of town staff. So Matt, I just wanted to let you know about that. She said Teresa Olson and Janet Staples were hugely helpful to her taking care of a tax issue. And she just wanted to let me and the rest of the council know that they were very expedient and friendly and helpful. So just wanted to pass that on.
Thank you very much. I will make sure they know in the morning. But we're grateful for their efforts and thank you for the compliment. Glad your mom got taken care of well.
Anybody else? With anything to report? Okay. Move on to the Finance Committee report, turn it over to Counselor Gabrielson.
Great, thanks, Jamie. I'll keep it brief. The financial statements continue to be tracking right along where we'd like to be seeing them. I'm in terms of both the revenues and expenses side. I think it looks like from the dashboard, we got within three grand of the salt budget for this year. So that was pretty spot on budgeting or weather forecasting or something like that. And I just wanted to mention, there's a couple of other items related to financing on the agenda, including an opportunity for public comment on the budget coming up later on. Along, in addition to that, the council will also be holding our regular budget workshops on April 26th and 27th, which will offer opportunities for the budget. And we're anticipating having some discussion around some of the larger ticket items, capital expenses that'll be coming up, not in this year's budget, in out years, but having some of those conversations as part of the 27th workshop as well. And I think that's it for the Finance Committee report.
Are there any questions for Jeremy? Okay. At this point, we have the opportunity for any citizens who would like to comment about something that is not on tonight's agenda. We have about 20, I'm sorry, 14 folks joining us at this point. So if anybody that's in the audience wants to speak about something that's not on the agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. Just raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Don't see any hands going up at this point. So seeing none, we'll move on to the manager's monthly report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know you have a heavy agenda this evening, so I will be fairly brief. But there are a couple of items that I'd like to update you on. One is that after meeting middle of last month and discussing the opportunity to have or possibly have Memorial Day celebration at the Village Green and the town center and a parade, the committee has decided to recommend not having it again this year and foregoing until next year. We will bring out our virtual parade that we did or celebration that we had last year that was extremely well received and grateful for the efforts that folks have there. It's a difficult decision, but with the numbers being where they are at and have been trending for a while, it's been somewhat concerning and the ability to physically distance and have folks be safe and celebrate, we hope that they can celebrate with friends and family or remember the service of those who have passed in protecting our country and our freedoms. But we are looking forward to a triumphant return in 2022 of the celebration, for sure. A quick financial note is that community services programming opened up a week and a half ago or almost two weeks ago. And it had the single largest subscription event ever in the history of community services with $200,000 worth of revenue in one overnight. I think Kathy came in and thought that the results were, that the math was off, but it was amazing. So there is a huge amount of pent up demand for some great programming with some COVID-safe senior programming and trips that are upcoming. And you know, we're seeing good, good things take place at community services. And that's very optimistic and we're happy to see they go forward. And then this, this week, there will also be a presentation, talking trash through the Thomas Memorial Library with Recycling Committee. They've got a good turnout so far for that. And if you're looking for information on how to properly recycle and other areas of concern relating to refuse disposal, please tune in. I think it's going to be worth your time. And it beats watching reruns of anything on Netflix these days. So original programming that it will help you make a difference, we are happy to provide it. So that being said, that's all I have for this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Are there any questions for Matt? I just wanted to add a couple of things. Counselor Noonan, Counselor Gabrielson and I, just about an hour ago, joined Matt, Town Planner Maureen O'Meara, a few other folks from the community for the official flag raising at the new yardarm flagpole on the town green. So thanks to the folks that came out for that very limited and COVID-safe gathering, but it's great to have that officially dedicated and to see the flags flying. They cleared out beautifully for us and it was a nice event. It was recorded, so I think something's going to get put up on the town website if people want to check that out. Definitely want to thank a couple of community members, Jim Hudener and Jeff Holden, Tom Egan, for their very generous donation that made that flagpole possible and recognize Dr. Jacobson, who worked with the town to create the easement on which the town green sits and where that flagpole is located. So thank you to all of those that were involved in making that happen and being part of the special celebration earlier today. The other thing, I just wanted to take a minute was to sadly note the passing of a respected community member, Sherman Altenberg, and pass along mine and the council's condolences to school board chair Heather Altenberg and her family as well as Ally Altenberg and her family in town. Sherman was a great caper and involved in a lot of different things, most recently the land trust. And he will, he will definitely be missed. So it's with our heartfelt sympathies that we pass along our condolences to his family. So with that, we'll move on to our regular agenda. And the next items, the next item is the review of the draft minutes of the March 8th meeting. Is there a motion on that item?
I move that we adopt the minutes as written.
Motion by Counselor Gabrielson, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Counselor Penny Jordan, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Deb, could you call the roll for the vote, please?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yep.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is item number nine, which is presented in the agenda as a consent agenda, consent calendar for items number 62-2021 through 66-2021. This includes acceptance of an anonymous donation to the police department, acceptance of a grant award from the Bureau of Highway Safety, the recommended policy relating to the short-term general fund and school construction bond order item and the school budget validation referendum warrant. Is there any counselor that would wish to pull out any of those agenda items from the consent calendar? Counselor Penny Jordan?
I'd like to pull out the 64 and 65.
Okay. Is there, so we'll handle 64 and 65 separately. Is there any one else on any of the others? Okay, before I move on on those, is there anybody from the public then that would wish to speak about item 62-2021, 63-2021, or 66-2021? And one thing I'll just clarify on 66-2021, the school budget validation referendum election warrant, all of that is simply to set the date and the wording on the election warrant, which is a yay or nay, in favor or opposed to. There's nothing at this point that pertains to the budget amount that's being set to the referendum or anything like that. This is basically just to draw up the language for the ballot and to be in accordance with the statute for how far in advance that needs to be done. So still much to come, as Counselor Gabrielson alluded to earlier, as far as the school board presenting the budget, their budget to the town council in a couple of weeks and for their public hearing on those items. So so returning to my question as to whether or not there's any public comment on the three items that are staying in for the consent calendar. If you do want to speak on those, feel free to raise your hand. Seeing none. Is there a motion on the items in the consent calendar then?
I'll move that we, I guess, so the motion would be a consent calendar that we adopt a consent calendar consisting of items 62, 63, and 66. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep. Great. Is there a second?
A second.
I'll go with Counselor Noonan on that. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we call the roll for the vote, please, again, Deb?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yep.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So remaining from that batch is 64 and 65, the two finance-related ones. I'm definitely going to open up for public comment on this. And there's now 19 people, members of the public. I think it might benefit the public comment, though, if we hear from the finance director first, John Corderaro, who's joining us to introduce and discuss the recommendation here. I think also Marcy Weeks from the school department is with us as well. I'm not sure if if she was planning to contribute to that presentation as well. So why don't we start with that, just so I think everybody, including members of the public, has a little bit better idea of what's being recommended here. And then we can turn it over to public comment and then counsel action. So John, are you with us? I think you might be muted, John.
And John, I have you promoted.
I'm here.
Gotcha.
Glad and clear. Sorry, I was muted. So item 64 is a policy relating to short-term general fund borrowing. The recommendation here is that when the town approves a bond order, that we take a look at whether or not we have cash reserves or cash assets that we can use instead of borrowing short-term under the bond order. What I'm proposing is a written policy that says the town can do it. It needs to be authorized by the town manager that because you use your cash to support a project, you forego interest earnings on it. And therefore, I recommend it setting an interest rate based on what we get from our overnight rate through our primary banker and adding 50 basis points. The savings here is that when you do a temporary short-term borrowing against a bond order, you issue bond anticipation notes. They can be issued through a capital market or through local banks. The cost of going through the capital markets is compounded because you start with the bond order, so you have a cost for your bond council. Then you have the cost of issuance, you have your financial advisor, and you have credit ratings. So that becomes a costly matter, but it has a lower interest rate. Now, compared to issuing through a local bank, there are less costs because you don't have to pay cost of issuance, you don't have to do a credit rating, but they capture a higher interest rate. What I'm suggesting is that once we have a bond order in place, that we use our own cash, but that the project reimbursed the general fund for forgone interest so that the taxpayers are not losing out on what would otherwise be interest earnings on the money that's available to the town. The second item, the number 65, is a request from the school board. It was a written request from the school chair and from the chair of their finance committee requesting that the town council authorize a $300,000 bond. They would use those funds to pay for a concept design for the Pond Cove Middle School project. Again, if we were to have that bond order in place, we could only get proceeds available either through the issuance of the bond or through the issuance of a bond anticipation note. If the policy in number 64 were approved, we would be able to use the town's cash on a written agreement and reimburse the town for forgone interest that we would otherwise would be losing.
Okay, thank you, John, for the introduction and overview. I'll note that the school board chair, Heather Altenberg, reached out to me on this item that they have a conflicting meeting tonight regarding one of superintendent candidates that they're pursuing. Otherwise, both she and the school board finance chair, Phil Sossier, would be here also to speak on this item. So I know, I think I saw both superintendent will from Ann Marcy among the public attendees. So with John's introduction out of the way, I'm going to open this up for, first for public comment. So if anybody from the public would like to speak on this item, now is your opportunity, either of these items, I guess, now is your opportunity to do so. So either on the policy itself that's being proposed for the self-funding option or on the request from the school board for the bond amount. Entertain public comment on either of those at this point. Don't see any hands going up at the moment. So I guess I'll turn it over to the council then for proposed action and discussion. Go ahead, Counselor Penny Jordan.
Um. I'm going to take item 64 first. Um. I understand exactly how John, you put this out there. And I understand the concept. I also understand the fact that it appears to be more cost-effective to use the general fund of town dollars or. My position is that this is, this is a policy, a policy change or a new policy being introduced about how we manage general fund dollars and how we can leverage them in different ways. And so what I think about is the fact that using this type of approach and really implementing this type of policy becomes a, almost like a, I considered it a slippery slope because I don't see what is the criteria that will be applied when we use this type of approach and this type of usage for general fund dollars. So what's the criteria? Every policy, I think, should have some set of criteria. And when we look at this, it can say that if we want to apply this policy in the future, we can say, well, we did it before, so therefore. So what I'm asking is that if we're going to develop this type of policy, there are certain things I need to understand. One of them is the criteria that'll be applied in order to use this. Are there limits in which the town manager can just kind of do, FYI, I use this loan approach, it's always going to be, come to the council and we discuss this. Is it that we will have maturity dates associated with these types of loans? I don't see a maturity date on the one that's put forward right now. And will we set it as a standard will be, these loans will exist for one year? Or, and they're renewable? So as I look at this and I look at this from a policy perspective, I think there are some elements that we as the council maybe need to discuss in more of a workshop setting.
Thanks, Penny. I, maybe, John, you can clarify too. I, as I understand it, with the two separate items here, one is to consider the policy of being able to do this, but just approving the policy doesn't necessarily obligate us to the second item, which is whether or not to actually go through with the self-funding for this particular request. So obviously, they're intertwined in this particular instance, but even if the latter had not been presented to us, the former might be an option we'd be considering regardless. I guess it's the way I'm putting it. Does that make sense?
If you're asking me, yes.
Yeah, that was a question for you, John. Yeah.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So I only raise that for clarification so that as folks are considering this, I think, I think, you know, one is to consider the merit of the policy item, the other is then to also consider the merit of the request being made. But in any case, Counselor Deveraux, you are next. Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Garvin. I have to agree with, with Counselor Jordan on this. I think that we're sliding down a slippery slope when we give oversight. Council oversight, we're removing town council oversight, basically. It says in here, town manager is delegated approval of such financing. So there's no maximum in here. There's no, as Penny pointed out, there's no criteria. So any town manager could just decide to do that with no town council oversight whatsoever. That's really scary to me. And I know we have great people and great people in place, but there's a reason that the town council has always had oversight over this. So I have a big concern about the criteria, there's no maximum limit. And my other question is, to John, this, this sounds great that if you did a bond this way, it would save people money, but there's really no reason the town council couldn't approve it and you could still bond this way.
You're absolutely correct.
So, so why are we taking away town council's oversight? When we could do this with town council approving, approving it? So without a workshop to discuss this, it feels like it's taking away basically the voters' rights to have town council review this and talk about it and decide on this. I think we need, we need a, some sort of workshop to review it.
Thanks, Counselor Deveraux. I have two things I just want to raise. The first being, without being explicitly stated in the suggested language that's before us, I assume that the same million-dollar threshold for any expense would apply to this. So I mean, there is the effective cap of that, that any expense of any kind, more than a million dollars actually has to, has to go for referendum approval. So there's that as a self-limiting cap based on that policy, separate from this one. Now, there's a lot of money between zero and a million. We can obviously discuss whether or not the manager alone should have that authority to authorize that kind of borrowing or not. But anyway, that does, that technically is in place. The second thing I want to raise before we go too much further, because a couple of counselors have brought it up around having further and deeper discussion on this. John, can you enlighten us on whether or not there's a specific time sensitivity to this? Or need to specifically take action to move this forward affirmatively or not tonight? Or can you tell us a little bit more about that?
On item 64, there is, there is no pressing need to act.
I guess it relates more to item 65 for the request for what, what the school board's looking to bond, so.
I would, I would defer to Marcy, the school business manager, I believe is on the call.
Yep. Matt will get her joining us in a second here. Hi, Marcy.
Hi, thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Great. So yes, I can clarify that. We had gone through the process and we have the, the plan in place to start the community engagement process, the architects and engineers. It's not like it's pressing tonight, but we would like to start moving forward of, with that process. But of course, it's not, it's not time sensitive for this evening. Certainly, that's, that would be okay.
So if, if the council decided to move this to a workshop as a result of this discussion and then potentially bring it back around for our May meeting, while not optimal, it's not, it's not completely disruptive to the plans, is what I'm hearing.
Right. I think that it would be excellent in the perfect world, Counselor Garvin. If we said, yes, it'd be great for tonight. But it sounds like there's some discussion that would like to be taken place, so I understand that. And I can also. And I can also answer any other questions if you have some.
Okay, I see a couple of other councilor hands raised, so why don't you hang with us for a minute and then I'll go to Counsel Gabrielson.
Great, thank you. And for the record, I'd be in favor of separating these and, and maybe moving forward with item sixty-five, even if we need more discussion on sixty-four. I do think, I, I think the idea of putting this to a workshop is a good one. In particular, I'd like to, you know, think about what the, the limits are. I, you know, I would note the other limit on this that's placed in it, the way that it's written is that it has to be for a, a bond issuance that the council has approved. So there is that additional limit on the authority as written. But I, I'd like to hear a little bit more on, on how those limits might apply with regard to, say, the amount of capital that's available within the general fund balance and, you know, as well as the, the terms of the, the loans that I believe Counselor Jordan raised as well. So Jeremy, I don't believe we have a motion on the table at this point. Would it be appropriate for me to make a motion to table item sixty-four at this point? Or do you want to hear finished discussion before we have a motion?
If you could just hold on that, if you're, if you're intending to table it, I, I do, since we've opened the, the discussion, well, you know, technically slightly out of order, I do want to give other folks the, the chance to weigh in without, without cutting off the discussion, so. Were you done with your comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Counselor Noonan, I'll go to you next.
Thank you. I think that Counselor Gabrielson just hit most of what I was thinking. But I do just want to reiterate, I would advocate for separating sixty-four and sixty-five. I think for sixty-five, if we did want to consider it, we would just have to change the wording of the motion where it says to issue bond anticipation notes or use a self-funded interfund loan. So if we don't approve that tonight, we could still approve sixty-five and we just have to take that option for the interfund loan out, I think, is what is the way I'm seeing it. So yes, I would, I would advocate. I agree, maybe tabling sixty-four and then considering sixty-five still tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Noonan. I, I want to just ask, because I see her hand raised, Superintendent Wolfram, I want to bring her in too, just to see if there was something else that you wanted to add to the discussion, Donna, before we move on, so go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
So in talking about this time sensitive issue, tomorrow night, the board is approving their budget and we have the three hundred thousand in our budget. And in order to keep the budget down, we removed it when we heard about the possibility of going to a bond either through the town or through a, a bank or the bond, the bond bank. So, um, so in thinking about whether it's time sensitive, it sort of is time sensitive because we would have three hundred thousand back in our budget. So I just want to.
Yeah, I, I think, I appreciate the clarification. I, I think what I'm hearing is the, the concern about moving too quickly on the change in policy, not necessarily the, the, the borrowed amount, item number sixty-five. And then it, it sounds like there'd be a chance to rejoin those two together. I, I don't know, if, if we take action on number sixty-five tonight, I don't know if the intent was to immediately, you know, approach, you know, the different other markets that, that John identified, you know, in his, in his presentation or if, if, if there's time to wait on the question on the self-funding. But in any case, I, I think what I'm hearing is, is let's talk through the policy question a little bit more, but maybe take action on the other part of the discussion, so.
Right.
But thank you for, yeah, thank you for clarifying that, Donna. So did any other counselors want to have anything on this before we, it sounds like offer a motion to refer rather than table it, a motion to refer this to a workshop, I think would be the appropriate action. Number sixty-four dash two zero two one.
I'll make the motion. I move that I move that we move item six-four dash two zero two one to a workshop. And can I add that and prepare it so it can be reviewed at our May council meeting?
Yep. That sounds good. We can, we can work out the details of the workshop date, whether, because we've got our, our budget meetings coming up, but maybe we tack it on to the back half of the second meeting that we were still going to hold to talk about capital stuff. So we might be able to piggyback some of those things. But motion on the table is to refer to workshop, bring it back around for main meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Counselor Noonan, is there any additional discussion?
Can we ask that John Q prepare the criteria for us to review at our workshop?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
I will take into account the comments that were raised tonight and rework it.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question on the motion to refer to a workshop, item number sixty-four dash two zero two one.
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so for sixty-five dash two zero two one, the question is, and so the, the question on this would be whether or not to approve the, the, and authorize the bond order request. And the wording in the agenda here is that that can be fulfilled through multiple different mechanisms, depending on, on how things go on the previous item. So is there a motion on this, Counsel Gabrielson?
I'll make the motion to start discussion. Sure. I, I moved that we you, I, I guess there's just one clause that needs to be struck from the draft motion, I think. Do you want me to read the, the motion as it would be amended?
Sure.
That the Cape Elizabeth Town Council authorizes a bond in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for funds to be utilized to pay for the development of a concept designed for the construction of the Pond Cove Middle School as prepared by the town's bond council. The bond order will allow the town to issue bond anticipation notes, period. The amount borrowed would be repaid by either the issuance of a bond authorized by the order or a larger bond that would be authorized by referendum. The school department through the school budget would be responsible for repaying the general fund. I'm sorry, would be responsible for repaying the band debt holder.
So before I look for a second, I guess, is, should the, should the wording where you were eliminating the language that's in the draft motion, should that instead be, should that somehow allude to the availability of the self-funded mechanism? If that, if that is available, I, I, I want to make sure that we're not taking action on something that potentially cuts out that option if that ultimately winds up being what makes sense to go with. So I'd rather keep it open-ended to the degree that if, if that mechanism is in place, then it is an option to use. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense to me. Just trying to see how that might be worded.
Yeah.
Is it possible, sorry?
Please.
Yep.
Is it possible, is it possible to strike the entirety of the second, the second sentence? The bond order will allow the town to issue. Do, do we need that level of detail? Can we strike the second sentence and then make the last sentence? The school department through the school budget would be responsible for repaying the debt holder? Whether that be a bank or the town itself or?
I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
John or Matt, do you have an opinion on that?
I, I think that's fine.
I, I would agree. I think that, that it still allows you the flexibility to do what you, you have both options available to you. And that's a, that doesn't take away from the heart of the, of the approval.
Okay. So Jeremy, would you mind just reiterating the motion? It, it basically want to recap what Gretchen said, striking the second sentence and the language change in the final sentence.
Sure. So I would now read that Cape Elizabeth Council authorizes a bond order in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for funds to be utilized to pay for the development of a concept designed for the construction of the Pond Cove Middle School as prepared by the town's bond council. The amount borrowed would be repaid by either the issuance of a bond order or a larger bond that would be authorized by referendum. The school department through the school budget would be responsible for paying the debt holder.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
My second.
Seconded by Counselor Noonan, is there discussion from the council? Counselor Penny Jordan.
Um, I just want to go on record as opposing this at this point in time. Um, I have a couple of questions and maybe Donna or Marcia could answer them. So when, when I read this memo from Heather and, and Philip regarding the request for the three hundred thousand, it says concept design for new construction of Pond Cove and Middle School. If we go through, we spend the three hundred thousand dollars to come up with a concept design for a new construction of these two schools. And it goes to the voters, to the citizens of Cape Elizabeth, and it gets voted down. What is the, what is the scenario at that point in time to go back to the, to the drawing board and see if a renovation is the approach? Or to, what's the discussion then if this gets voted down?
Either Donna or Marcy, do you want to answer that?
Sure. And Donna, you can interrupt me at any point if you like. I think at this point, Counselor Jordan, that the, the risk would be that, as you said, that there's a potential that we do the process and we go to referendum and it doesn't get passed. And at that point in time, from what I've observed and been advised, there's a regrouping. And then at that time, there is more community engagement to see if the, can go back out again for another effort to go back out to referendum with a different process. So we're trying to keep the risk low at this time and put a full effort into what the community's needs are with the concept design in this next year and put full effort with, with high hopes for referendum, but it's at the voters' will. And at that time, it definitely, the obligation is clearly stated that we would budget and pay back the, either the bank or the town at that point in full budgeted and then regroup and, and try again. If, if that were the worst, the worst case scenario, if it was voted down, yes. So again, try to keep the risk as low as possible at this point.
So, um, sorry, Jamie, can I continue?
Yeah, go ahead. Then I'll go to Jeremy.
Okay. So, um, so if it were voted down and you, but three hundred thousand is old, then, then a year from now, be in a position to pay back that three hundred thousand or have to fund it in some way in order to pay it over time?
At that time, what I would probably be doing is looking at our budget with our cash balance, our fund balance reserve to see if we can include it in the budget in entirety. Or if we have worked out, if we're doing the financing through the bank or, or even through the town, if there were payments involved, we would definitely be budgeting the payments. But we would be, my job right now is to make sure that we have the cash reserve moving forward to be able to pay that back in full if the bond is defeated and then we have to do something differently. So yes, that, that would be the plan at that point, Counselor Jordan.
So can the dollars be financed?
What, what was that? I'm sorry, what was that?
So can the dollars be financed? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, the concept design finance, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, it said, it doesn't, if the referendum doesn't pass, can that three hundred thousand dollars really be financed?
It would, if, essentially, if we are borrowing for a year right now, that would be the financing for just the year with interest only. And then the intent would be that it is then paid either in full or within the year from, and John, you can correct me on that, but that's, that's essentially with a bond anticipated note that a short-term financing is just what that would be. So, so yes, it would be where we would have to make sure that our finances are in place. And so that's what I'll be working on as the next step to try to secure the budget for the school board to make sure that they're in that position, if that is the case that we're facing in a year.
Annie, this is John. Your question was whether or not the three hundred thousand, if the referendum were voted down, whether three hundred thousand could be financed. It could be financed based on this bond order that is before you. It could be financed for a short period of time or for several years to reduce the, the principal that's paid out. But that's why the policy that was proposed in sixty-four is dependent upon having a bond order approved by the council and in place before doing any additional financing.
Did that answer your questions, Penny, for now?
For now, yep.
Okay. Jeremy, you are next. Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. So I just wanted to speak to the question Penny was raising briefly too. I had the opportunity to talk with, with Phil Saucier yesterday about this a little bit. And essentially, you know, this is, the, the cost of this concept design is a, an expense that the school board has decided that they're, you know, need to move forward with in order to put this project forward. Really what this item is looking at is just, it, it's really a cash flow item to take advantage of the low cost of borrowing right now. So instead of programming this full six hundred thousand dollars for this year's school budget, you're spreading the cost of that expense over a couple of years. And since the interest rates are so low right now, we can basically do that with very little, you know, cost in terms of money, in terms of borrowing. If the referendum is successful, then all of that cost can be capitalized as part of the larger bond, which is what that, that sentence refers to by the bond, you know, rep, a bond that would be authorized by referendum for the larger construction bond. If not, then it's a short-term borrowing, take, take advantage of those low interest rates and it gets repaid, potentially even before the bond or the referendum comes through, depending on the timing for when that referendum happens. So that's my, that's my understanding from speaking with Phil anyway.
Jeremy, I just want to correct you. I think, I think you misspoke in stating the amount. I, I think I heard you say six hundred thousand, it's three hundred.
Sorry.
Yeah. Okay. And then before I go to next Counsel Boucher and then Counsel Deveraux, Marcy, am I accurate? I, I also spoke to Phil about this and I understand even though we're a week and a half or so out from from meeting with the school board to review the budget in detail, that while the amount to be borrowed has been taken out of the operating budget, am I correct that there's been a, an earmarked amount to cover the debt service?
Yes.
That is in the budget? Okay. Counselor Boucher, you were next.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that from being on the subcommittee for the buildings. This step is being taken in order to get an accurate assessment of costs in order to ask for that larger bond. And so if this step isn't done, the amount that would go to referendum wouldn't necessarily be accurate. And so it is kind of just trying to get an accurate assessment of things at a low risk like Counselor Gabriel Son said about the low interest rates.
Counselor Deveraux?
That, that's very, very true. However, um, this really needs to be part of our budget discussion. What happens if this, the big bond, however big it is, doesn't pass for building two new schools? Then we're basically kicking this off to another council to have to deal with. We're kicking it off to another budgeting process when really it's, it's, it, it should be dealt with now, we should talk about it now. And it should be in, in the budget rather than kicking it down the road to another council. So I, um, I have some concerns with putting it in a, in a bond that there's been no community engagement at all. We don't even know if our town is going to pass the big bond. So to bond this when there's been no community engagement, nothing's happened to gauge the pulse of the community of whether they want to build two new schools. I think we're putting the cart before the horse here.
Counselor Deveraux, I'm not sure I'm understanding your point about potentially pushing this off or kicking it to somebody else's plate to, to handle. Because I think what I just heard is that, I mean, this is sort of a classic chicken and egg situation, right? You can't scope the project and know what that big amount is that's going to be borrowed or requested to be borrowed without doing the detailed work. You can't ask the people, the citizens of the town, are you in favor of buying this thing? When they don't know what it is they're buying. So some work needs to be done to, you know, scheme up what, what that, what that widget is that they're actually approving or not. And everything I've heard so far is that if, if ultimately the citizens decide, no, we don't want that, it's on the school board to repay that regardless of the financing mechanism. You know, to, to pay that back. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure how we get to the determination that you were just laying out about public sentiment and things like that without doing this as a next step to begin with, I guess is my question.
Well, what I'm saying is that because there's been no engagement, we have no idea what the public feels about building two new schools. We have no idea. And so.
But if you went to them today, if you went to them today and asked them for their opinion on that, what would you use to present to them? Any kind of proposal when that's what this is asking for?
Well, we were, and you were in those meetings also, we were presented with ranges. They could have presented ranges to people and said, these are the ranges, whether it's renovation or it's building new schools, these are the ranges. But what I'm saying is that we, we don't even know if it's a 50/50 chance or a 90% chance that it's going to pass. So if it doesn't pass, then this money is going to be pushed off into another budget. It won't, and typically when this has been done, it's put in the budget, it's budgeted, it's approved, and it's taken care of. We're sort of pushing it off to another council. If, if the big bond passes, great, it's all rolled in together. But if it doesn't, then this whole budget, this 300,000 is pushed off to another school board, another town council to work through the budget discussion. Why not just take care of it? Especially since we, we don't know what the community is even thinking with regard to whether they, they would agree to bond this or not.
Counselor Gabriel, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I pushed the wrong button. With due respect, Counselor Deveraux, I, I think this has been part of the public discussion. It's been part of the school board's budgeting process. And it's also been part of the, the committee that you, you were a member of looking at, at the options for the school renovation or, or construction. The school department or the school board committee has, has made a policy decision to, to fund this study. They're really just coming for us to ask us to authorize them to finance it in a way that is cost-effective, in my opinion, and is going to help with essentially what's a cash flow problem for them this year due to, due to COVID-related expenses. They can either absorb the entire cost of this in this year's budget, which will result in a tax increase, a larger tax increase year on year. Or we can finance it and spread it over a couple of years, which will allow them to reduce the amount of tax increase that we see in this year. I mean, that's really the, the decision that's in front of us. Whether or not to proceed with the study, that, that's a decision for the school board to make. The, the reason we're in this position is because the town has the municipal bonding authority for the school district as well as the town. And so that's why we're being asked to authorize the bond. They, they don't have the legal authority to, to issue a bond on their own.
Thanks, Jeremy. Superintendent Wilfrid had her hand up. I wanted to give her a chance to maybe respond to a couple of the comments that have been made. Go ahead, Donna.
I just wanted to say that part of the work that this would cover would be the meetings with the town, meetings with the staff, gathering of information in what would be included in the school. So that work hasn't started and can't start until this $300,000 is secured for the work. So, thank you.
So what you're saying is that part of it is the public process?
Correct.
Other discussion? Counselor Penny Jordan?
Um. Basically, what I see happening here is a, a project that's working under a set of assumptions. And I've managed enough large projects in my lifetime to know that multimillion-dollar projects, once they leave the station, many times head down the track and through pure momentum, they keep going. This assumption is that a, that new schools will be built. And I recognize citizens have not weighed in on it yet. But the assumption is the design we're doing is for new schools. And so when we get to the point where, and I'm going to say this again, that the new school referendum is voted down, we'll be asking for another set of dollars in order to say, okay, what design can the town accept? And I, I'm kind of with Valerie in that we got to understand, I believe, understand what the appetite is for citizens of the town for funding an $87 million project or more. And I believe, and Donna, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that Heather actually said, should we put something on the, the ballot when we do the school budget, yes or no, that kind of measures the pulse somehow? And so I will throw that out again as I really would like to know what the appetite is in our town for new schools and multimillion-dollar projects that we'll be paying for for 30 years. So that's.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Well, isn't that our next vote? Or did we just approve that, sorry, in the, in the consent calendar? I can't remember. We did, didn't we? The, the referendum, we just approved the, the referendum vote, didn't we?
Yes, yes, you did, Counselor Jordan.
So that, so I was gonna say, maybe we should have thought of that half an hour ago, Penny, and we could have changed it. Or can we still change it to, to add that on?
Anybody that voted affirmatively could make a motion to reconsider that item.
Right. So maybe that's what we do.
Since we all voted affirmatively, we could do that, but.
I'm just saying it's not too late to, to try and do that.
Other comments? Something I wanted, I, I respect where both Penny and Counselor Deveraux are coming from. I, I do disagree to a certain extent with the, the notion that there hasn't been a public process and opportunity for public input in regards to these plans that have been being developed over time. The committee that was formed, that worked on making the recommendation to the school board was a large committee that I think represented a very diverse cross-section of the community. Those meetings were open to the public, received a significant amount of public input. And like I said earlier, I, I, I think this is the next step in a process. It would, I, I, I'm not sure, another way forward on, aside from the financing structure of it, I, I, what I'm hearing from some folks is whether or not it even makes sense to spend the money at all. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to separate those two things because some of the input from, from people during this discussion is, why are we spending $300,000 potentially if we don't know what the community's appetite is for the big ticket? And then the other part of the discussion is just whether or not that should be financed through a bond mechanism of some kind, or whether or not the school board should have included it in their operating budget. So I think those are two separate things. And I think on the, the latter one, we have more, that falls more under our purview. On the former, I'm not sure it really does. So I'm just trying to distinguish between those things. Counselor Deveraux?
Thank you. I, I was not saying that there has not been a, a committee. We had a committee to look at this, the school and determine if it needed to be renovated, if it needed new, new schools built. We had a committee. I'm not saying there wasn't. What I'm saying is there hasn't been a full community engagement. There's a lot of people in town that don't even know that this is an issue that, that we're even considering raising their taxes in this amount. So I'm saying that because I feel that there's been no community engagement, we can't, we can't gauge whether it's a 50% chance, a 90% chance, a 10% chance of the bond passing. If the bond doesn't pass, then it's rolled off into another year's school budget. Last year, the budget increased four and a half percent. This year, I know that they've been, they were looking at seven and a half and they've been working on it and getting it down. But next year, it may be four and a half or seven and a half again. And now you're going to roll that 300 into next year or the year after, is what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is really, I think we need to look at it and decide if that 300 goes into the budget now, or is it reasonable to just keep rolling it off to another council to determine if the budget's too big, too small? Because then if, like it is now, it's in the budget. You're not going to be able to just keep rolling it off. So that's my concern.
So I, I think, and I'm not sure if I need to state it differently. I think, I still think, Counselor Deveraux, you're blending two separate and distinct questions because you started off your comments about not being sure whether there's community appetite for the big project. The second question is whether or not if the school board feels that this is something that needs to be done now, that they should either include it in their operating budget and figure out what the impact of that is, either in the form of increased impact of tax rate or having to, you know, reduce or eliminate something else as a trade-off. But the school board is the one to make the decision about whether or not this is something that they think is an expense that they want to move forward with. And, and then the second question just becomes, how are you actually paying for that? So to me, I, I think the entire question of, of, you know, what the community appetite is for the large-ticket item, really, I'm not sure, is, is something for us to even be considering right now.
I, I hear what you're saying. However, you, um, maybe I'm not saying it clear enough. Because they haven't looked at community engagement and we don't know how many people are for it or not, we don't, if, if we knew that the bond was going to pass, then it'd be real easy to say, yes, let's do this and let's just roll it into the bond because it's going to pass. But what I'm saying is because we don't know and we haven't really done the community and we haven't gauged the, the town's desire for this, we don't know whether we have a 50% chance of the bond passing or not. So my guess is it's not going to pass. And then this budget item is going to be stuck in next year's budget of the year after. That's, that's what I'm saying. I'm not trying to say that, that they shouldn't do it.
My point is just that we don't, we don't take that position with any other item in a school budget where we don't, we don't say, oh, well, we're not sure what the community's appetite for a new, you know, math teacher is, so we don't know if that should be in there or not. Or, or, you know, and I'm giving a ridiculous example, obviously. But my point is, the school building committee made a recommendation to the school board. The school board accepted that recommendation. Now the school board is coming to us with two options on how to pay for it. And, and that's, I think, what's before us, not the policy or, or political decision about whether or not the, the community wants the new schools or not.
I, I agree, and you can continue to argue with me. However, I completely agree with you. However, they've never come to us before and said, we want to bond this money. It's always been put in the budget, always. And so.
That's fair. That's what I just said. If, if we want to debate that, that's fine. But I'm trying to steer us away from the conversation about whether or not, I'm, I'm seeing from some comments, seepage of the issue of whether or not the school should be rebuilt or renovated. And that's not our decision to make right now, is all I'm trying to point out.
I don't think anyone's making that argument right now. What we're looking at is the budget and it's up to us to review budgets. So, and it's us, up to us to decide if we're going to bond this or not. I think that's what's on the table.
And that's what I'm trying to keep us focused on. So other discussion? Did you have another comment, Valerie? Did you have another comment, Valerie, or your hand just stood up? If there's no other discussion, then I guess we'll call the question on the motion.
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
No.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
No.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries, five yeas, two nays.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Donna and Marcy, for joining the discussion. And John, for your work on both of these items. Next up is item number 54-2021. This was an item that was tabled from our March 8th meeting. With apologies from the counsel of the time for having run long on our previous agenda during that night. So I'm pleased to have this item come back for us to look at tonight. And I know we've got some folks from the Ad Hoc Civil Rights Committee that are in attendance. So Matt, do you want to promote any of those people that need to be?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Tonight, I believe we have in attendance both co-chairs, Keela Austin Griffin and Melanie Thomas. And Rachel Davis is the staff liaison for that, for that committee. And we have all other members as well who are in attendance. So I will promote Keela and Melanie here to take just a moment. There we go. They should both be joining us. Here we are. Good evening.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining us. And again, thanks for your patience last month. Appreciate it. And tonight, for that matter, because it's already quarter after eight.
Having us.
So I will open up for public comment, but I think, like some of the other items that we've done, maybe go through the presentation that you've prepared as a starting point, and then invite any public comment so that folks are sort of grounded in a little bit of what's on the table here. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Great.
Matt, did you promote Rachel as well? She's going to be doing our slide presentation.
You're too kind. Thank you for reminding me. And Rachel, I'll have you also as a co-host, so you can.
Share her screen.
Yes, exactly. Thanks, Melanie.
Okay. Here we go. Oh. Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Hello, my name is Melanie Thomas, and I co-chair on this fabulous ad hoc committee known as the Civil Rights Committee. Keela Austin Griffin co-chairs with me, and we will both do the presentation tonight. That represents our entire team. We had our very first meeting via Zoom in September 2020. Primarily, we have been meeting every other Wednesday for the past six months. Right now, the Civil Rights Committee is not permanent, but we unanimously believe it should be. We've had many discussions on what the work of this stand-in committee should look like. We've created a draft charge and more for your consideration. This is our presentation to you. Before we discuss the purpose that was originally given to us, we must first go back and understand what led to us getting this ad hoc committee started in the first place. Many of us remember in May of 2020, watching video footage of an unarmed African-American man named George Floyd being killed by police. Millions watched and were outraged. Here in Cape Elizabeth, this led our community to a unity rally and a Black Lives Matter peaceful protest during the summer of 2020. This community action led our town council to create this ad hoc committee, and we thank them. This is the purpose and the charge you gave us in July of 2020. Our purpose, the committee shall be an ad hoc committee which shall identify and review policies in town government, services, and municipal departments that contribute to systemic and structural racism, making recommendations for policies to promote greater equity and inclusion. Next slide, please. Our charge, the Civil Rights Committee is specifically charged with the following. One, to prepare within three months from the first meeting of the Civil Rights Committee, a draft stand-in committee charge for town council consideration. Two, assess immediate actions and advise the town council on issues of racism and inequality in Cape Elizabeth. Next slide, please. The work we've done so far. Our committee began by developing a framework for assessing town policies for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Also, brainstorming possible engagement and educational opportunities for the community. And lastly, drafting a charge for a proposed stand-in committee. We have worked so hard during these last six months. Our next few slides will discuss each one of these bullet points in detail. Our framework for assessing town of Cape Elizabeth policies for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Number one, we worked on determining department and policies to evaluate which ones we were going to evaluate. Number two, determine purpose of policy and impact on our community. Number three, provide recommendations slash changes to policies if needed. Number four was to draft recommendations and report this to the committee. And number five was to report completed information to our town council. Our framework is like a blueprint. We will be using the SWOT analysis. SWOT stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We will use this same framework slash blueprint on each town department policy to be reviewed. This is what we will be looking at. The equity areas that a policy primarily impacts, such as housing, employment, and opportunities within the community. Two, any unintended or potentially unintended unintended consequences of that policy. And lastly, any harm that has been or could be caused by the policy. Next slide, please. Definitions. This framework includes a set of working definitions for concepts and terminology in order to create common understanding and consistency. These terms include, but are not limited to diversity, equity, inclusion, equality, anti-racism, discrimination, structural racism, institutional racism, and systemic racism. Engagement and educational opportunities for the community. We have identified the following opportunities we would like to pursue. We'd like to get permission to do a 21-day anti-racism challenge, partner with a sister city or a neighboring city, and of course, reach out to our community more by having conversations, surveys, and such and such. This is my absolute favorite slide, and hopefully the most, this is what I'm passionate about. It is so important to get our community involved. We are making a proposal for you to approve us doing a 21 anti-racism challenge, which is a great way to get the community learning and processing at the same time. Also, sister city, which is another great way to partner with another local town or out-of-state city or First Nations community where both communities can learn and share. Also, ongoing educational events for the community, like a town survey, would be so valuable. Keela will now do the rest of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So our preliminary meetings also included exploring critical questions that could influence our work in an effort to anchor those ideas to the committee's stated purpose and charge. Our work in exploring these critical questions has led us to the following. We propose that the ad hoc Cape Elizabeth Civil Rights Committee become a permanent committee, called the Cape Elizabeth Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, to serve as a bridge between the town council and the community in order to celebrate and advocate diversity, equity, inclusion, DEI. The committee shall promote education and training, increase community engagement, and review town policies and provide policy recommendations. We believe this new name embodies our scope of work and also allows this committee to represent and advocate for multiple social identities, putting diversity at the starting foundation. Because unless we acknowledge diversity, both as something to be celebrated and as an area for advancement, we are unable to even begin to address equity and inclusion. Diversity includes all the ways in which people differ, encompassing the characteristics that make one individual or group different from another. Diversity brings together ideas from people of varying backgrounds and experiences in order to grasp a fuller, broader range of thoughts, feelings, interactions among community members. Diversity means representation. Equity is the fair treatment, access, opportunity, and advancement for all people, while at the same time striving to identify and eliminate barriers that have presented, that have prevented a full participation of some groups. It is when everyone has access to the opportunities necessary to satisfy their essential needs, advance their well-being, and achieve their full potential. Equity does not mean everyone receives the same, but rather everyone has the same access to shared resources. Equity means access. Inclusion is the act of creating environments in which any individual group can be and feel welcomed, respected, supported, and valued to fully participate. An inclusive and welcoming climate embraces differences and offers respect. In other words, and words and actions for all people. It means everyone can participate and everyone belongs. Inclusion recognizes our universal similarities and interdependence despite our differences. Inclusion means belonging. So with that in mind, we believe this committee will be able to achieve these goals by being tasked with the following duties. Number one, advise the town council on policies and practices to promote DEI. In line with our original charge, we will accomplish this by doing the following. Reviewing policies and practices of town departments and make recommendations to promote anti-racism, equity, and inclusion, and advocate for DEI with respect to housing, transportation, public accommodation, and access to town services. The second component is education. Positive change begins with education, and that learning is continuous. We will accomplish this by doing the following. Developing programs, events, and initiatives to promote diversity, inclusion, awareness, and anti-racism in our community, and to provide ongoing guidance on approaches for training town officials and employees in order to eliminate explicit and implicit bias. The third way is through community awareness and engagement in hopes of creating shared ownership and providing opportunities to come together as a community to learn and grow together. We will accomplish this by the following. Create tools such as surveys in order to better understand our community's views and concerns about DEI, and create campaigns that promote Cape Elizabeth as a town that is a welcoming and respectful place to live, work, and visit. And before we conclude, Melanie and I would like to say a special thank you to the fellow members of this committee for the time and effort behind the work we were able to present this evening. And members of town council, Valerie in particular, who has spent many hours helping to guide this process. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Keela and Melanie, and Rachel as well, and Counsel Deveraux. I'm gonna, to keep us on process here, go back and ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to offer any comment on this item before we go on. If you are interested to speak on this item, just raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Okay. I'll turn it over to the council. Counsel Penny Jordan?
First of all, I want to thank the committee for the great work. I think it hit all of the elements that I was thinking when we created this ad hoc committee, and I appreciate all of the work that they've done. I don't know how the rest of you want to proceed, but I will say that I think that this needs to be a standing committee in our town. I think that it can serve many great purposes around education and bridges with the council, et cetera. So I don't know if we need to workshop this, but I would propose that this become a standing committee. And if you want that motion, I'm more than willing to make it.
Thanks, Counsel Jordan. I think, and Matt, maybe correct me if I'm wrong. If we want to do that, the best action would probably be to refer it to the ordinance committee to draft the formal charge. Is that correct?
Right on, right on.
Yeah, rather than in a workshop, I suggest that we do that. Have the ordinance committee draft up the formal charge and bring that back and potentially have a workshop on that if we need to, but. So if you want to make that motion, Penny, referring it to.
I think you articulated it very well. We needed an ordinance committee meeting. Yes, yes.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be freed up in about a half hour, I think, from all other obligation, right?
I move that we forward this along to the ordinance committee to draw up the formal charge, et cetera. And put that in motion to make it a standing committee.
I second that.
Motion by Counsel Penny Jordan, seconded by Counsel Deveraux. Would other counselors like to weigh in with any discussion?
I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Boucher. Counsel Noonan?
Yep, I just, yes, I echo that, but I also just want to say, I think you really nailed the scope. I'm really impressed with, you know, how well-defined it is, and I think it sounds like a really great opportunity for the town. So we appreciate it, and I look forward to seeing what the ordinance committee can come up with.
Counsel Deveraux?
I'd just like to say thank you both so much and everyone on the committee. It's been such a pleasure and honor to work with everybody. Everyone's worked so hard. They meet every other week and put so much effort and energy into this. It's such an honor to work with everybody. So thank you, and keep up the good work.
Any other comments? Matt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo the comments as well. I know Melanie and I had a number of conversations and really have enjoyed speaking with her on multiple occasions, and it's been a learning process for us. We have a lot of folks who are new to committee work and to town work. And I really am so overjoyed to see this report tonight, as well as having to wait over to hear the report out. The other thought I was wondering on, and just a question for Ms. Thomas, and it would be about the 21-day challenge. I know that that is an effort that they'd like to see underway, and I didn't know if that was time-dependent or not, and what direction you needed on that as well.
Um, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna ask, because I was just wondering if you could maybe give us a little bit more detail on what that is, what the concept is there?
Sure, so I had, someone had reached out to me in Freeport. They have a tri-county coalition that they're doing. So they were the first ones to even have thoughts of doing a 21. So they were the first ones to even have thoughts of doing a 21 anti-racism challenge where they felt like 21 days of learning something new is about enough to really get you understanding and processing. And I agreed. So I had, I have been helping them with their 21-day challenge, which they started on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And it was well-received. They had over 300 people. It's Freeport-Pownell, if that's how you say it, and Durham, Dunham. I'm not, I don't, I don't go up north that much. But it was really well-received and I, I myself did the 21-day challenge with them. And I learned a lot, even I did. And I'm encouraged to bring that here to Cape and get approval from the town council to do that, so we can get the community involved. And it would just be every day, just either reading something, a pod, educational piece, could be a poem, just learning about racism, about races, race, race relations, you know, many of the things that we've, we've talked about with our definitions and educating people that just don't even know too much. And I'm okay with saying not even I know everything. None of us do. So it's just a good way to get the community involved and I'm excited. So yeah, I really would love approval, so we can get that going. Because I do have the DEI School Task Force that I'm a member on of, and they would like to participate in that as well. So it would be great to have the town involved, the library courses already involved, because we have Rachel Davis, and then having the school do it all at the same time, and preferably before school gets out would be great.
Thanks for that extra detail. Penny, did you have a question or something you want to add? No? Okay. So on that item, is that, clarify for me, Matt or Rachel, is that, is that something that we need, we need to vote on or approve to do that? Or is that just programming that Rachel would take the lead on coordinating with members of the committee?
I think that would be fine. I just wanted to make sure the, the council was comfortable with that as well. And I didn't, as a, just didn't want to, I guess it's easier to do things and ask for forgiveness, but oftentimes just to, to go forward. And I know Melanie and I had talked about that, and I didn't know if it was dependent upon like the month of April or, or May. So, but I think if, if there's no council expressed, I guess non-approval or disagreement with it, then I think you'd be good to go.
Okay, well, I'm seeing heads nodding. I certainly support it. So to the degree that you need endorsement, but it sounds like you've got it. And I, I don't think there's a specific, you know, motion or action that, that we need to take beyond that. But that sounds like something that'll be excellent, and I'll look forward to seeing and participating in that too. So, so any other?
One more thing, and you know, sister city, of course. I mean, that's not a timeframe thing, but we would love to do that too. I just think it's a great way to kind of adopt and foster with another community, so we can all learn and what's working and what's not working. So again, I just didn't know if we needed approval or if that fall, fell, fell in the category of number two with our original purpose in charge. But I just want to make sure.
Yeah. So on that, I mean, I think it depends on sort of what level of, obviously, you know, we have an existing sister city relationship with a community in, in Russia. There's lots of towns that have multiple sister city relationships, so I would certainly support that. I think it, it falls to the level of what degree of formality we're looking to sort of cement this as. So if it's something that is, you know, a resolution or a proclamation of some kind, then that probably is something that we need to draft up language on and figure out who that's going to be and all that kind of. If it's more of an informal thing, then, then, you know, you know, I'd say it's probably a little looser. So maybe just some further discussion on that as to what, what's, you know, what's in mind and how to move that forward.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. So with the motion on the table to advance this to the ordinance committee for formalizing language around a charge and committee structure and all that kind of stuff, is there any other discussion on that? Seeing that, I'll just conclude by again thanking you both and Rachel, all of the committee members, members of the public that have been part of your process and provided input. I'm really grateful for the work that you all have done on this broad but very important topic. And I'm glad that we as a community are focusing more on it. And so thank you for all of that effort. It's invaluable. So Doug, could you read the roll call for the vote, please?
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Devereaux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Can I, can I say one more thing, Jamie? I just want to, I just want to let Melanie and company know that the ordinance committee is quite inclusive. And so when we're working on what the charge, et cetera, of the committee, then we will invite you to attend. It's not done in a vacuum. So, cool. Thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you very much, everybody, for that. We will now move on to let's see, where's mine? Just, there we go. Item number 42-2021. Also tabled from the March 8th meeting, picking up where we left off on short-term rental amendments. Is there anybody from the public, of which we're at about 24 folks right now, that wants to speak on this item at this point? I don't see any hands going up. Mr. Chair, do we need a motion to take it off the table first? Uh, yes. Which I don't think we actually did for the last one. I think it actually being on the, we covered this before, right? We, you need to vote on tabling something, but it being on the agenda effectively takes it off the table. Yeah, so never mind. We don't need to vote on it. So it being on the agenda, it is off the table. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on it? I see no hands. Now I see one hand. Scott? Matt, we'll open your mic in a second. Hold on. If you could give name and address and limit your comments to about three minutes, please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Scott Rothwell, 119 Old Ocean House Road. It's been a long process, and I appreciate all the effort that all you folks have put into this. I just have one question that under the final revision of this new, of the ordinance, and it's under, in particular, the rental intensity clause. I was hoping you folks could address this, as to what the intent of that category is. And in our particular case, we are considered a hosted homeowner, hosted stay category, but it would appear that with the current revisions, which would indeed allow two different guest rentals during that seven-day period. The, the way it's written, and it appears that, for example, if we had two different guest rentals during that timeframe, one for two days, another one for two days, that would allow three days rental. And the way that particular clause addresses the use of our property by family members. I'm not sure if the intended purpose of this particular restriction would actually disallow our children to come home and stay for that extra three-day weekend. Oftentimes, in the past, we have actually, you know, planned around the fact that the kids are coming home for a long weekend, and then we were able to make the other days available. So I, I would just hope you'd be able to discuss this a little bit further, so that we would all be understanding. If our homes would not be allowed, we would not be allowed to have our children stay in our house during that timeframe when it's not available for rentals. I'll put it back in your, your plate. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, for the question. I'll make sure we address it. Are there other members of the public that that have any comments at this point? Again, I don't see any hands going up, so speak now or not. Okay. I'm gonna hazard a guess that I don't think that the intent of that language is to preclude you from having your own family members come to a residence where you are there. And you're just having your family members. I think, I think the, the intent or purpose of that language was around the unhosted properties where we've, you know, had, you know, lots of instances of saying, oh, oops, sorry about that. This is, you know, so-and-so cousin Joe that's staying here, or, or, you know, my brother-in-law, whatever, doesn't count as a rental, things like that. I don't think the intent of that was around family members at a, at a hosted, a property that happens to be a hosted, permitted, short-term rental. Does anybody else have a different view on that, or? No. Okay. And so I guess the question is, does the language here, is it, is the language here clear enough to articulate that, or do we need to clean that up a little bit?
Is Maureen out there?
Yes, she is.
Looks like she is. I think she was trying to avoid that, but he roped her in, Penny. I'm blaming you.
I did, I did, I did.
She should be joining us here in any moment.
I think you're right, Jamie, that it was about the unhosted piece. But we often did talk about the fact that once you're a, a, a short-term rental, that your, 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 your family coming to use the house, which you're not at, counted as an event. Because we had no way of like sorting that through.
But I think the key point is what you just said about when you're not at, right? So if it's somebody's own family coming to visit them while they're there, I don't think that we can.
Your family can't come and see you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there may be some people who would love to have that rule. But I don't think that was the intent.
We'll, we'll have Maureen here in a moment. I'm just waiting, for some reason, we dropped her for a moment. So when I see her pop up, I will get her back in. I apologize for the delay.
Okay. While we're waiting for Maureen to rejoin, I'll just ask one last time if there's any other public comment. And then I'll close for public comment. All right, I don't see anybody. So we'll wait for Maureen to come back. When we met on this in March, folks had some concerns, folks had some things that they wanted addressed. We've got version in front of us that, aside from the question that we were just discussing, I think, response to most of the things that folks brought up last time. So does anybody want to begin?
I think it covered most everything that I had looked to have changed. And I spoke briefly with Maureen earlier today about the, on page six of the redlined one that our primary resident posted, because there was no explicit statement saying that it was, there was no limit on it. So it's kind of assumed or implied in there, which is fine. I think that dwelling unit being brought in to here makes sense. So that the primary resident posted, if they have underneath one roof, two dwelling units, then that one that's used for a short-term rental is really falls under adjacent property. So I think there's some nuances in there that the primary resident posted that we all need to make sure that we understand. I, I support it. I support that change. But I just wanted to highlight that for people that the term dwelling unit is an, an important change within that statement. Thank you, Maureen.
So I'm here. You hear me?
Yep, got you. Thank you very much. Did you hear the discussion that we were having around personal use?
I did.
Primary hosted versus unhosted.
I, I did. And I do understand that it is uncomfortable to tell people that they are limited in hosting family members in their own home. But the exception for allowing people to host family members at the same time that they're running a short-term rental is one of the biggest loopholes in the current ordinance. It was abused in a neighborhood that you are all familiar with. Actually, multiple neighborhoods that you're all familiar with. And so the ordinance is written in such a way that a, someone who wants to run a short-term rental really has to make a choice. Do you want to run a short-term rental, or do you want to have your family members over? And if you want to run a short-term rental, you have to operate the rest of your home consistent with running a short-term rental. So if you have a short-term rental permit and you're, say, for example, limited to 42 days of rentals, and you want to host your family for one week, that's got to be one of the weeks. If you're going to be a short-term rental hosted and you're allowed two rentals per week, you should be saving one of those rentals for when you're having your family members there. And if the council wants to exempt family visits from the caps that are imposed by the short-term rental operation, you are basically preserving one of our most problematic loopholes.
So I think all we were talking about was the, as it pertained to the hosted and not the unhosted. I think there's a recognition that that's a loophole that's been widely abused on the unhosted. Is, is that, is that also the case on hosted?
The problem is that the ordinance is written, so the rules are the same across all four categories. And if you're going to start building in exemptions for one category, I, I shudder to say that we got to go back and keep working on this. Yeah, that's, thank you. I see that, Penny. And the, the problem now is that we don't have any of those categories. So we, you can't compare what, what our problems have been with now with going forward under this, this new structure with primary residents. So we've, we've definitely had this issue with people saying that it wasn't an extra rental. It was family members. It was friends. It was friends of family members. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, but I, go ahead, Penny.
The fact that the hosted, primary resident hosted has no limit on, on the number of days that they can do short-term rentals. The intensity is what overlays a guideline or rule on. um, that they can do short-term rentals. The intensity is what overlays a guideline or rule on that, which is you can have two within a seven-day period. So what this is saying is that if your, um, kids come home for uh, the weekend during a seven-day period, that equals one event, correct?
Correct. And that's, that's, that's a little bit more enforceable than to say you get two rentals plus family members. And remember, you know, it was the council who said you wanted something that was more enforceable.
Yep. Yep. We did. Yes, we did.
Council. Oh, go ahead Penny. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, we knew that, we knew that that, uh, the, the family, uh, piece was going to be a challenge when we came down to the wire because people would pay attention to it at that point in time. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that at last month's meeting, we had decided to move to this two-per-seven-day period for hosted because they were such a unique position. So you know, the family visiting in your home that you live in, uh, while you're there, you, you have more opportunities now. And as councillor Jordan mentioned, you now have unlimited with, uh, the 42 days doesn't apply and you have two rentals per seven-day period. So just, I guess, have your teenagers and your college students let you know ahead of time that they're coming home.
Uh, other comments? Go ahead, councillor.
Um, yeah, I have a hard time with this one. Um, we really haven't had any problems with our, our hosted, uh, short-term rentals and, um, I thought making it two per week was, um, really restrictive. So I have a really hard time with this and I understand the loophole and that was on none, that was our non-primary resident. Rent, people that were renting that didn't live there primarily. And we've changed that to where your primary owner, um, on the unhosted. So I would be open, open to changing this to, um, uh, unhosted only, but I mean, hosted only, but leaving the unhosted the way it is. Uh, it just seems so restrictive to me.
Uh, I tend to agree. I, I'm, I'm not really comfortable with, um, it, it somebody's hosted property telling them that their family members can't be there. Um, so that wasn't my intent, um, with this. I, I certainly appreciate the, the problems that have happened with unhosted properties. Um, where somebody says, oh yeah, it's a family member. That's not really a renter, all that kind of stuff. But I don't really think that that is a problem that exists on the hosted side and, uh, just as a matter of, you know, I, I, I just, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that and it wasn't my intent. So, um, councillor Noonan?
Thank you. Um, can I just clarify, um, if you're an unhosted rental, but then you have guests when you are home, does that count for that? To me, that shouldn't count towards your 40-day, 42-day limit. Is that, but is the way it's written, does it count? It, I see Caitlin nodding and okay, I, I guess I never really put two and two together to figure that piece out because it does feel a little. I know we're talking specifically about hosted right now, but the same thing is true of the unhosted. So if you get an unhosted permit and then you're home and you have family over for the weekend, does that count? Just towards your 42 days?
Uh, if I could. Yeah. A short-term rental may be operated by a property owner in their primary residence when the property owner is not in residence during the tenancy of the short-term rental tenants. A property may be used as a short-term rental for no more than 42 days per calendar year. So if you're there and it is your family, I think you're fine.
Right. Because then it's not, you're not running, it's not a short-term rental.
Right. But, and the other thing is, I, I mean, again, you know, our biggest struggle has been with enforcement. And the primary residence unhosted is limited to 42 days and each rental is a minimum of seven days. So you've got this six-week window that the code officer has to enforce. Um, that's, I think that's going to be a little more doable for him, but the primary residence hosted, I mean, I understand that respectfully, I understand that many people have asserted that there's no problems with the primary residence hosted, but the reality is, is they don't get a permit. So we don't have a good record of whether or not there are really problems.
Um, other, other comments?
I, I want to go back to, yeah, I want to go back to, um, the, the fact that, um, when one makes the decision to do short-term rentals, they are entering into a, a business. And they're making that choice. And I, I think Nicole made a valid, a valid point. Um, the key is, is that people are making choices to have short-term rentals. They, whether they're hosted or non-hosted. When you make that decision, you're having to make certain concessions about your, your property. Um, and I think where I'm at, at this point in time is we've made a lot of, uh, compromised decisions throughout this, this whole process, this whole process. And, and we, we talked about family members, um, back when you were on the, uh, ordinance committee, Jamie. Um, and people didn't catch on to it at that point in time. It traveled through this document. Um, and, um, I have to say that, um, I, I think I have to stay with the way the wording exists right now.
Yeah, I, I mean, I remember those discussions. I, I think I, you know, and, and maybe my own fault on this. I, I was much more focused on them as they related to the known problem of unhosted properties where people were just claiming friends and family, um, non-commercial use when that wasn't in fact the case. Um, I hadn't sort of played it forward to, um, the application to the hosted properties. I agree with Maureen saying, you know, we, we don't have a good baseline to work off of since those have been effectively unregulated to this point to begin with. But throughout this entire year and a half long process, when many people have had the opportunity to voice any concerns that, um, exist with those type of properties, we've not heard one hardly peep on that. So, um, I, I have to believe that you know, there's, there's not, um, the problem to the same extent that we were looking to address on the unhosted there. Um, and I, I think it's, I, I just have a very difficult time. I, I totally agree with what you say because I, I'm, I'm fully on board with the, the notion that if this is a, an enterprise that you want to engage in, then there's certain rules that need to be adhered to. And if this is what you're signing up for, um, you, you know, sort of come in with your eyes wide open to that. Um, I, this might just be, uh, this particular thing might be a bridge too far for me on that. I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm certainly not, you know, if the majority of everybody else is fine with this as is, I'm not gonna, you know, vote the whole rest of the thing down because of this, but I, 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 I just didn't think that that was our intent and it's certainly not what mine was. So, um, other comments? Councillor Noonan?
Sorry, I'll just, uh, as we're talking through this and struggling with it a little bit, but I think that the conclusion I'm coming to, Jamie, um, is that I'm, I'm with you on that one. I, I understand that there need to be rules and regulations around this. I also understand that with some of the types of rentals, there were issues with turnover. So you could argue that, you know, even with a hosted rental, you know, if you have a party that's there for a couple of days and then another party gets there for a couple of days and then you have friends that come over, but um, but again, I, I don't think so far we've seen any of those, um, concerns be raised and that it does feel a little, um, overly restrictive to me. I, I, you know, some, I, I, I appreciated what, um, councillor Boucher had to say, but at the same time, I know you can't always plan when you're, when your 20-year-old's going to want to come home for the weekend or something. And I would never want to put someone in a position where they had to say, sorry, you can't come home because we already had two, um, sets of guests. And I, and I understand what councillor Penny Jordan's saying, that that's kind of what you sign up for, but I just, I don't think it's necessary. I just, I think we'd be instituting it just for the sake of having regulations around it, I guess. So I think.
How would we, how would we change the wording? Because I think we've got to get, we have to move this forward tonight.
Yep, I agree.
No, I totally agree with that. I don't. This is the only place that that applies though, correct?
Right.
There's no other, there's no other passage where that language applies. Is that correct? Right. Did we lose Maureen?
Yes, you lost me.
The family use on rental intensity is the only place that applies, correct?
No, it's not. It, the thing is you've written, you know, you've got a whole bunch of requirements here under the short-term rental requirements and those are, there is a set of requirements that apply to all short-term rentals. So um, everybody's getting a permit advertising. It's the rental intensity paragraph on page eight, starting on line 12.
Right. That's the only place though, isn't it?
Um, no, I asked up to deal with paragraph two up above. I think under advertising. This is the problem. I mean, we, we'd have to go through it again.
Can I, can I?
Go ahead.
Um, okay. I'm just going to play out a scenario. So, um, kids come home, um, uh, for the weekend or and I'm not saying any unhosted people would do this. I'm just saying this could happen. Um, a primary resident posted and the, uh, people aren't there when there are um, others in their home or dwelling, um, and they say that was our children when it could have been, or it was my cousin. When it could have been, uh, a, um, a short-term rental customer. I mean, that could occur, that the host isn't there and they say, uh, no, that was a member of my family.
Councillor Jordan? That's under paragraph eight on page 12. Um, you could have someone complain that the good neighbor conduct provisions have been violated and the response could be it wasn't my renters, it was my kids.
Right. So that's, that's what we were trying to cover, those types of scenarios. And I know what you're saying, Jamie, that it was the, um, unhosted that we were really focusing on. But you can flip this around and say, and although, all the people we talked to that were hosted, uh, short-term rentals are really good people. Um, but, um, some new hosted types come in and they may play it in a, in a different way.
But wouldn't that person still be in violation of the ordinance because they've gotten a hosted permit, but now they're having an unhosted rental?
I mean, I, I don't. So it would be that too. Two things.
I'm not seeing, I'm, I'm just scanning through the language here though. I'm not, I'm not seeing other passages that make reference to this. Am I missing something? Cause even two above doesn't specifically call out uh, the, the family situation at all.
No, because the family situation, I mean, a lot of this stuff is, is blanket applied to all the four categories and it's in different parts of the ordinance. I'm, I'm concerned then, uh, in, on the fly, I'm going to miss something.
Jamie?
Go ahead councillor.
I, I've, I've looked through the entire ordinance also, and I only see it there in number three rental intensity. Um, I think that it's, if that's our intention to change this to, um, because it's too restrictive to exempt the hosted, I think we can say that and, um, we can approve this and say that we're exempting hosted from this restriction. And if Maureen finds it somewhere else, she can clean it up. But basically we're putting it on the record that it's exempted from hosted only. And, um, we can go ahead and vote on this.
Uh, Penny?
Um, my, uh, my question is how often are we talking about that one would have their family members, um, come, um, and when they're, uh, hosting, um, short-term rentals out and, um, can we move forward with it as is and, uh, review later? I think there's, there's several places in this ordinance that, um, we have made certain assumptions. And, and we say, let's move this forward and we will evaluate it. If we make the commitment to evaluate um, after, um, uh, a season or six months, eight months to see if the ordinance achieved what we wanted it to achieve. Um, and that at that time we say, okay, um, let's review and people come forward and they, we can talk about what, um, if any changes need to occur. That would be my point.
I agree with that. One of the things I'd like to see more regularly, especially when we have the permitting in place is a, here's how many unhosted we have. Here's how many hosted we have. Here's how many complaints we got this month. Like I would love to see that from, our town manager report at the beginning of our meetings, you know, here's a status update on short-term rentals, at least for the next few months. So we can see if it's working and when everyone is permitted, we can send out a survey saying, hey, um, hosts, how's it going? Um, and hopefully to neighbors as well. But I, I think we need data to see if these changes are working and we also need to see if they're working for our code enforcement officer.
Matt, can you, um, I, I have a question for Mr. Rockwell. If, I, I saw that he's still in the attendees. Can you open up his mic again?
Yes, sir.
Or does he need to, or I don't know if he needs to raise his hand for you to do that or not.
You should be live right now, uh, Scott.
Hey Scott.
Yes, I'm alive.
Yes, Jim. I'm just trying to think this through and I, I know we're really like getting wrapped around the axle. We all want to move this forward, but can you, can you walk back for me? The, the practical impediment that you're trying to lay out here, like, so like if, if your family comes home for part or all of a week or something, are you generally renting to short-term renters at the same time or?
Oftentimes.
What's the obstacle here that this creates for you?
So kids, as you can imagine, are very spontaneous. Uh, I guess I am as well. Uh, but what happens is, is kids are saying, hey, mom, dad, I'd like to come home next weekend. Um, and I'll say, oh, wait, I already have four days booked with two different guests. You're going to have to wait until. Um, and I'll say, oh, wait, I already have four days booked with two different guests. You're going to have to wait until Christmas time. So, sorry. That's a little bit of sarcasm in there, but that's the type of conversation that we would end up having, or I suppose they could sleep in the laundry room. That is a possibility.
Well, that's sort of irrespective of the ordinance though, right? That's just whether or not you've booked your rooms or not. That, that really doesn't have anything to do.
When our kids come back to visit, we would shut it down during that period of time. So we wouldn't have a rental. Uh, because we wouldn't be here the whole time. They would be coming back and we'd be doing things with the kids. So we wouldn't be here to be on hand to tend to any problems that may occur. And actually, uh, the, the, the primary problem that I had was that entire rental intensity clause, if you read it, technically, uh, Lisa and Scott Rockwell can't even go into their own apartment to work in there. Because it says, the owner and family, in fact, I'll read it. The exclusion uh, is including but not limited to personal or family use by the property owner. That, and that goes for both primary, primary as well as the uh, uh, primary hosted as well as unhosted. For instance, I could not have had Thanksgiving dinner in our kitchen that week, hosting my family in there because I would have already had guests in the previous week. Say two guests. That, that's a possibility. Yeah, it's a, it's, it's just the, the way it's written. It's punitive, it's unnecessary. And, and there's no reason you can't actually just strike that uh, as an exclusion for primary residents hosted because there are other items right in that particular clause that are already uh, uh, isolated for primary residents hosted versus unhosted. I don't want to throw unhosted under the bus, but they've yet to raise their hand and, and uh, talk about this issue at this point in time. So it, it would happen many times spontaneously or even planned because we would say, no, we have an opportunity here in a couple of weeks is a three day weekend or four day uh, opportunity there uh, to be able to have the kids come up and stay. So it's just
I don't, I, I'm not trying to be dense about it, Scott. I'm, I'm
No, you're not.
I'm, I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the fact that that's, isn't that a problem that you've booked out your rooms not knowing that your kids might come home? That's just an inventory problem for you, not a, not a problem of the ordinance, right?
That's a parental issue, I suppose.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Frankly, having the opportunity that the kids can come back, uh, I mean, one lives three thousand miles away and the, well, actually they're all in excess of three thousand miles away, so. Uh, and when they can get a weekend, we'll gladly fly them home to stay with us. Um, but the point being, everything else about the ordinance requires this all to be under our roof. We're sharing our rooms in our house as part of our business. As a way to stay here in our homes, to hopefully have the kids be able to come back and take the homes eventually, uh, when they finally settle down. Uh, that said, the exclusion here just seems like it's a you know, twisting that, the screw a little bit tight uh, on our, you know, for us, uh, after all the work we've done. And uh, a possibility of reviewing it in six months. You know, that's, that's a good thing and I appreciate that and that's a worthy endeavor. But I just think it's simply something that can be stricken right there because, and I've read it, read through it. It doesn't refer to this particular exclusion anywhere else except in that particular paragraph. And I think several of the councilors there have acknowledged that as well.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm just, um, I absolutely don't want to let this be what holds us up on this uh, any longer. We, we have to move forward on this tonight, um, but um, that doesn't make sense to me. So.
So do you want me to make a motion?
Uh, anybody can, sure.
Do I have to read the whole thing? Um, last time I was able to refer to what was written in the um, in the agenda. Um, so I've got the motion in front of me that was um, presented at the last meeting and it's whereas the town council has received complaints that short term rental operations in residential neighborhoods have disrupted the peaceful, quiet enjoyment that people of this residence expect. Um, whereas the bulk of the short term rental complaints have originated on properties which are not the primary residence of the property owner. Whereas the town council has determined that the existing regulations on short term rentals has not adequately addressed the threat to the public welfare relating to compatibility with the residential uses and preservation of the character of the neighborhoods in which they are located and to the availability of their housing stock in town. Whereas the town council has determined that short term rentals uh, operated by someone in their primary residence will be more diligent in managing the short term rental and preserving the peaceful, quiet enjoyment of their neighborhood. Whereas the town has adopted zoning in the town center, business aid districts that require commercial uses on the first floor, which promote um, commercial vitality. I have a question on that one. Uh, vitality, a pedestrian friendly environment in short term rental operations on the first floor is incompatible with these commercial district purposes. Whereas the town council intends to improve enforcement by requiring that all short term rentals obtain a permit by reinforcing town regulations by adding third party enforcement services. Whereas the town council wants to preserve some opportunities for property owners to earn short term rental income and defray taxes and housing costs. Whereas the town council seeks to balance the competing interests of property owners wishing to rent their residential properties to short term rental gaps for compensation against the interest of residents wishing to preserve the traditional peace required of their residential neighborhoods and to ensure the safety of argument, occupancy of short term rentals. Whereas the town council has adopted a moratorium on issuance of new short term rental permits which will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Whereas the town has engaged in a thorough and transparent public process with its stamp this opportunity for written comment and oral testimony than included town council workshop on September fourth, twenty nineteen, eight ordinance committee meetings, four planning board workshops, a planning board hearing open to the public on November seventeenth, twenty twenty, four town council workshops and four town council meetings, including a public hearing now and therefore the town council adopt short term rental amendment. What, Matt?
Go ahead, Matt.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, I'm sorry to interrupt Counsel Jordan. There, there are also, I, I believe, uh, four different, four amendments that are also as a part of this, uh, that uh, come, uh, that were uh, crafted at the la, at the end of the last meeting, uh, on the subject as well, that you may want to say, uh, including, uh, I meant, including all four amendments.
Is that written in a motion that should have been in front of me?
Um, no, uh, by, my trusty scorekeeper and uh, assistant town manager pointed that out to me that uh, uh, that, that was approved, uh, was part of the motion that the last, last one. But you needed to have the, the verbiage actually spelled out so you could see it, uh, in, in all its clarity.
So whereas the council requested for amendments that were um, subsequently incorporated within this ordinance. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. I would, I, I appreciate that and so, just trying to keep the scorecard clean.
So are you going to uh, fix that uh, motion that will go into our minutes? Okay. So now therefore, the town council adopts the short term rental amendment. That's my motion.
Thank you, Counsel Jordan. Is there a second? Counsel Gabrielson? Further discussion? I, um, I would like to make a motion that we revise on page eight, line sixteen, to insert, uh, after property owner and before comma for unhosed, uh, for unhosted properties.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second for an amendment to section three on page eight. Is there discussion on that?
Can you just repeat that one time, Jamie? Sorry, I want to make sure.
So I, I think, I think simply by adding in reference to uh, unhosted primary residents there. Um, so the sentence would read, when a rental or non-compensated use of the property by any one individual or group, including but not limited to personal or family use by the property owner of an unhosted primary residence. That that covers what we've just been debating back and forth.
Okay, but do we, do you think we then need to uh, just totally scrap the end of that sentence? Where it says, except that a primary residence posted may be allowed no more than two?
Why?
Well, because now we're saying that they are allowed, but we wouldn't want to reference hosted in that sentence if we don't want it to apply to them, right? When I
We've created a loophole.
I don't think so.
I think so.
I, I don't think so. It, it, it looks like there's still a, um, two uses allowed, however, they can have um, family in the home and it doesn't count as a use.
It's still
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, it still says they can only have two at the beginning, but then under the section about non-compensated use, we no longer want to say they can only have two because what we're saying is that only applies to unhosted.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right? So we say upfront, primary, they can have two and then we're saying, but any non-compensated use by, in an unhosted rental counts.
Yes. Yes, I see what you're saying. So
I would suggest that we would want to just delete the whole end of that sentence, the except that a primary residence posted.
Yes, I agree with what you're saying and I would accept that as a friendly amendment to strike uh, everything from uh, that second highlighted portion on.
Yes.
Yep.
Would be my amendment to your
Yeah.
amended.
So, uh, Counsel Penny Jordan?
I, the reason I say we've created a loophole is because now a uh, hosted short term rental can say, but that was my cousin Fred. I didn't use up my two, I didn't use up my two because my cousin Fred's name and visited. So I, I can still, um, I can, I can still rent again this week, even though it really wasn't their cousin Fred.
I see what you're saying, Penny. However, we do have penalties in place and if, um, every week they're saying it's um, cousin Fred, then we're going to figure out it wasn't and they're going to lose their license. I, I think that we have um, penalties and what Nicole said is, let's see how it goes. And then in six months, if there are problems, we, we can make it more restrictive. But, but going out of the chute so restrictive just seems to me um, uh, punitive really. Um, and let's see how it goes by leaving the um, the hosted exempt from relatives.
Yeah, I'm, I, I guess I'll, I'll lay out the I'll, I'll, I'll lay out a real life, you know, more of a real life scenario, right? So, you know, say the Rockwells have a guest Monday, Tuesday night. And that's one rental and that person leaves on Wednesday and they have another guest come in Wednesday, Thursday and those people leave and then their children and grandchildren come in for the weekend. I, I don't, I, I, like, I, I don't think that, that, um, you know, the, the children and grandchildren come home to visit for the weekend or something. I don't see how that is a problem. And, and something that the town should be regulating like that. I, 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 on a practical level, find it unlikely that there's going to be renting and family there at the same time. I don't know if that's a concern that people have, just on the, you know, a, amount of available inventory of rooms, so. Uh, I don't, I don't know.
Can somebody reread, can somebody reread what we are going to be, um?
So my proposed amendment is starting on line fourteen, section three, page eight. When a rental or non-compensated use of the property by any one individual or group, including but not limited to personal or family use by the property owner of a primary unhosted uh, primary residence, unhosted, short term rental. So on and so forth. And then striking the except part, the second reference to the except part in that paragraph. Is there other discussion on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, let's vote on the amendment then. Deb, can you call the roll for the vote on the amendment?
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Devereaux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
No.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
No.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries five yeet to nae.
Okay, so with the approved amendment, are there any other amendments uh, beyond what we've already approved tonight and previously? Does anybody intend to offer? Is there any other discussion on the motion with the amendments overall then?
Maureen, there's, there's no ripple effect through the rest of this. That's, that's fine. Okay, okay.
Um, I want to make a, this has been a long, long process and I just want to make a few quick closing comments on this. Number one is I want to really, uh, as I have on a number of different occasions, thank um, Penny, uh, you for your um, spearheading the work of the ordinance committee on this um, over several iterations of the ordinance committee. Um, thank you very much for that, for the process that you um, uh, architected in terms of um, uh, working to gather stakeholder input uh, on this in a way that I, I don't think I've seen done on, on hardly anything else in my tenure on the council. So thank you very much for all of your work, uh, for all the folks that um, served on the ordinance committee in working on this for your time and efforts and then to all of the other counselors, um, you know, for all of the time that we've all You know, for all of the time that we've all put in on this. Um, I want to very much thank the members of the public um, across the full spectrum of of uh opinions that were offered. I think as has been stated here a number of different times, what we're vote about to vote on here tonight is intended to be a compromise that tries to, to the best degree possible, reflect you know, all different stakeholders and their positions on this in a way that um tries to balance all of the different interests that were brought before us and and really try and do as little harm to all of those folks as is possible in the crafting of the ordinance. The thing I just want to, you know, sort of reiterate, um, that I think is the key net takeaway, even though in the last two meetings, we've gotten really wrapped around some very fine point details on this. The key items on this um on these regulations are are really borne out in the fact that number one, everybody is now going to need to register. Okay, so everybody conducting this type of activity and enterprise is going to have to register. And if they're not, there's consequences for that. By factor of them registering, we'll have a much better view of what activity is taking place in town and be able to better craft and and respond to those conditions going forward in the future. As Council Boucher indicated tonight, this should not stop here. This should be an ongoing process that accounts for the activity that's going on and how that activity is measuring up against the regulations that we're about to vote on tonight. Number three, for the vast majority of folks, the it'll have to be your primary residence uh that you are um using for short term rentals. And I know that we've heard um very, um, you know, compelling um appeals from residents about some of the really trying uh behaviors that they've had to endure and put up with uh under the existing regulations. And my fervent hope and true belief is that the change to primary residence is going to dramatically, dramatically reduce the occurrences of those um instances. And in some of the cases and some of the neighborhoods, um, that the problem has been the biggest. Um, I think, you know, specifically in the Richmond Terrace neighborhood, all but one of those properties would qualify under these new regulations, uh, should we move forward with them in a minute. So that is a really, really big takeaway. Um, we'll have a much better way of, um, you know, having, you know, a second set of eyes out to what activity is taking place with the data analytics firm that we've signed on with. So that will greatly help with the enforcement and we've strengthened um the the ramifications should anybody violate any of these regulations. All of those things are the most important components of this. The things about length of stay, days, et cetera, the things that we've just been discussing for the last, you know, twenty minutes to a half hour. I don't want to minimize those. I don't want to diminish their importance because those fine details are important in terms of how something gets carried out. But the major, major impact of these will be in the other things that I just enumerated. So um, I want to thank everybody for getting us to this point. I think we've made um tremendous um advancement on this. And I'm hopeful, uh, really, really hopeful um that it will provide the the relief to those who have been negatively impacted while still allowing um those people who have been following the rules um to continue to operate in the manner in which they've been doing. So if there's no further comment, um, Penny, you've got your hand raised. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Maureen for all of the iterations of this document that she has taken us through the the level of of detail and thinking and um, and for putting out the uh in front of us some of the tough questions that we really needed to grapple with and I don't think we could have asked for a better person to go into this level of detail with us. So thank you, Maureen.
Agree. I know we all echo that. Uh, Council Deveraux, did you want to add?
I I'd just like to um follow up on um Jamie's remarks and and of course Penny's remarks with Maureen. Thank you so much for for all of the work and the late nights you've put in. But I really just want to um also comment on everyone who's been a part of this discussion, who's emailed us, who's come to the meetings, whether it was ordinance committee or the town council um and have shared their experiences of um difficult experiences with short term rentals in their neighborhoods. I know you would prefer that um there were no um short term rentals at all in Cape and I just want to say I really appreciate your willingness to um be a part of this process and to compromise and I I know it's been really difficult for you. And likewise, my heart goes out to everyone who's been responsible and acted as good neighbors when renting their properties. Who can no longer, if this passes, will no longer be able to rent short term or have their ability to rent um decreased a fewer days. I know this has been a compromise, as Jamie said, and I too am hopeful that this is going to be provide relief to um everyone who's been negatively impacted and create that sense of uh community that we all are hoping it will create. So thank you all for being part of this process.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Let's vote.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Next up is item number sixty seven dash two zero two one, opportunity for public comments relating to the proposed FY twenty twenty two municipal budget. Is there is there anybody uh from the public that would wish to speak on this item at this time? Um, I just want to remind folks that we will be having a public hearing on the budget, both the general fund and special revenue funds. That'll be at a special meeting on May third, and then the town council will vote on the special revenue funds at the May third and the general fund budget on the tenth. We have upcoming meetings jointly with the school board, uh, will also be reviewing their presentation to us of the uh school budget. So seeing no hands going up right now. There's no specific action to take on this and we'll move on to item number eighteen, which is sixty eight dash two zero two one, request for a town council workshop relating to shortcut roads. Uh, Council Gabrielson, you were approached by a resident who wanted to initiate conversation on this, so I'm going to turn it over to you to tee this up and then um see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on it.
Great, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. I um, I I just, I guess, um, want to take an opportunity to to say, uh, you know, having been approached by by the Board of the Cottage Brook Condominium Association, I wanted to bring this item up for council discussion uh to see what the best next step might be for proceeding um with a review of this gate. I know this has been an issue of some uh significant debate in the past. Having um, having now had the Cottage Brook neighborhood built out. It seems that there's a, to me anyway, there's a substantive change in in that area of town and and I think legitimate reasons for for neighbors to want to look at exploring new ways to more easily connect with with neighbors. And so I'd like to, you know, just bring this forward to the council and see what what appropriate next steps might be. And I think the best place to start, that's probably going to be in a workshop. We've sent a couple of things to workshop tonight, but scheduling an upcoming workshop workshop discussion.
Mr. Chairman, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Jeremy. Um, I was just asking if there was anybody of the six folks remaining from the public that wanted to speak on this item at this point. Don't see any hands. I imagine first off that there's probably at least a couple of counselors that maybe don't have the the history on this, um, that would benefit from uh workshop discussion. So I think that makes sense. I'm guessing that probably our May workshop would be the time to take this up. So if you want if you want to make a motion, Jeremy, go ahead.
Sure, I I'll move that we refer this to workshop and if it gets scheduled in May, I think that's fine. I don't think there's a particular rush on it, but that timeframe sounds great.
Uh, is there a second?
A second.
Counselor Noonan, any discussion? Go ahead, Penny. You're on mute.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna send this to workshop, um, they, I think the planning board dealt with this issue in depth as this development was happening. So it it would be helpful if uh Maureen or somebody sent along that information or she was available to help us with the history. It would be good.
Certainly. Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, if if I may, uh, yeah, I just took down a note to pull together a history of the shortcut road for the May workshop. So uh, what we can do is uh try to get the information related into the referendum that was uh that that took place back in two thousand and six as well as uh the other information related to the cottage, uh Cottage Brook development when that took place uh as well. So we'll try to pull together as much information as we can as to the background of how it came into place and then uh what took place during that time period as well. So we'll have them ready for council.
Maybe we could deal with the Broadco one at the same time.
Any other comment? Okay, uh, Deb, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, next is item number sixty nine dash two zero two one, recommendation to use unassigned funds to cover an overage in the communications tower project. Matt, can you bring us up to speed on this, please? And then we'll go to a comment.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, as you, as you recall, in the current budget, the communications tower was an approved project and we did go out to bid or ask for a request for proposals from the from the general market, uh, soliciting them from all folks who do. It's a fairly, as I said, my memo, a fairly specialized uh area of construction with only so many folks who do that. Well, we reached out to everybody available to get uh to get bids from. Uh, we had what we thought at the time coming into the project, uh, a really strong cost analysis uh to to base our our estimate from. And the bids came in greater significantly higher than what we were looking at. Part of that is due to increases, mostly material costs, steel tariffs uh has not helped out uh when you are looking to put up a hundred and eighty tower, hundred and eighty foot steel, mostly steel tower as well as electronic components have also uh increased. Uh, so what we did, and when I say we, it's not the royal way, it's myself, uh, Chief Pleason, Chief and uh Jay Reynolds, it's Steve Harding, the town's attorney, as well as Mark Davis. Uh, one of our consultants and uh and other uh other electrical consultants as well as site work folks tried to value engineer as much as we could into the project, uh, reduce the scope and size of uh of the uh of the of the building that will ho- will will host the electronics, uh, also reduce the size of the fenced in area and try to do others, other changes to the project in order to find savings and cut costs where where applicable. We did that over about a two month period of time, uh, somewhat concerned now that that if we don't keep moving forward, elements of the construction will continue to increase. Uh, our antenna equipment, for instance, have gone up almost ten percent in just that two month period of time from fifty to fifty two thousand. So I guess that's what what concerns us. And uh, so what we've done to close that gap is we have uh looked at our existing projects and other areas that we can uh beg, borrow and steal funds from our uh from our existing budget or current budget. But that has still left us with about a forty five, just under a forty five thousand dollar gap. That's about forty three thousand and change, but we felt just in case of any other uh unintended changes that may have take place between last week and and approval tonight, and we're resigning the document that we uh we would just put in an extra seventeen to eighteen hundred in contingency. And that's why we were requesting the forty five thousand from unassigned funds to to cover that gap and and commence with signing the documents and uh look to have construction take place ASAP.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Real quick, I'll ask if there's anybody from the public that wants to speak on this. I don't see any hands raised. Is there a motion? Go ahead.
I'll move.
Yep, go ahead, Penny.
Okay, I'll go. I knew that um we 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 that the Capitol is the town council authorized is the use of forty five thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance for the remaining project cost for the communication tower project for communication equipment of public safety and public work.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Council Boucher. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Go to the vote.
Counselor Boucher?
Yes.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next is item number seventy dash two zero two one, proposed agreement with Central Main Power to convert municipal street lights to LED. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about this? Seeing no hands raised. Matt, uh, do you want to tee this up as well?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In light of uh, in light of the council goals that were stated and just recently affirmed, uh, the council is looking to uh reduce energy independence, energy dependence, consumption and greenhouse gas emissions, pursue LED lamp installation and uh as well as reduce our current, our our carbon footprint. I'm happy tonight to bring forward probably the best deal I I could will be able to strike in my career, and that is converting uh all three hundred and sixty one current street lights to LED at a cost of zero point zero dollars to the town while also saving just under eighteen thousand dollars uh in year one. And we do not have to maintain them and CMP is 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 very enthusiastic about this. And it's a fifteen year agreement that can be ended upon the terms that are were identified in the agreement with notice to from either pro- either party within the window as identified. So this is a win win for the town in so many different ways and very happy to bring this forward. Uh, again, at zero point zero dollar cost to the town. Happy to answer any questions.
I I have a quick question about what you just referred to, Matt, about the sort of term of the deal and and all that stuff. So I mean, why, what would, what would cause either side to want to get out of the deal, I guess?
It's it's just a, it's just a, I guess, more or less a fail, a fail safe clause that they have in the agreement. Perhaps if they, if they find that they don't want to be in the light, light business anymore, they could end the, end the agreement, or if the town decided that it could get a better uh deal by perhaps going with a different provider for energy. If we decided on that, we would have to uh, you know, basically buy out the end of, you know, the remaining years at the cost of the fixtures. That has been, uh, you know, um, aged out and depreciated. But uh, yeah, it is. I think it'd be unheard of unless unless things dramatically change in the scheme, but I think it's more or less a a a security, security measure within the contract.
Right, and the savings. Right, and the savings presumably that would accrue would cover that anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah, but I think the savings will only increase over time as energy costs, uh, uh, increase as well as, but at the same time, uh, really significantly, as you saw in the, in the, in my, in my memo, uh, reducing the wattage amounts by astronomical amounts. It's, it's uncanny.
Okay, uh, is there a motion?
They're moved.
Uh, motion by Counsel Boucher is our second.
Second.
Second by Counsel Gabrielson, any discussion? Seeing none, Deb?
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Um, next up, uh, to close the agenda, is any comment from citizens, uh, topics that were not on the agenda? I will also say that, um, we do have an executive session scheduled for following this, but, um, I don't think we need to have that tonight. I'm not prepared to move forward with it, um, both based on the hour and also, um, uh, I need to do more homework to compile all of your responses that you all got to me. Um, and I already discussed that with Matt earlier today. So what we'll probably do is add an executive session to the back half of one of the two budget meetings upcoming um, and handle it that way. I don't expect that executive session to be very long when we do have it, but I just want to be fair to get everybody the information at a time. So, um, that being said, um, is there anybody remaining from the, um, five members of the public that would like to make any comment for something that was not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Moved by Counsel Caitlin Jordan, seconded by Penny, uh, assuming no discussion. Deb, could you please read the roll one last time?
Counsel Boucher?
Yes.
Counsel Deveraux?
Yes.
Counsel Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counsel Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Counsel Noonan?
Yes.
Chairman Garvin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the work tonight and see you next time.
Good, good night.
Good night, everyone.